And went door to door.
No, I'm saying.
How many?
All right. I don't think we're all good over there. All right. Okay, let me pull this up. All right, we will call this study session to order at six oh one P M. We'll get started. The only item we have on the study session today is the coolant, I'm sorry, compressor issues at the Kennedy Recreation Center. So Tim, if you want to head up there and get started and let me know as you need slides moved. Happy to.
I appreciate it, Mayor. We can, we can quickly flip to the next one. I believe each of you does have a copy of this as well, but just for going over this, the agenda for the evening is kind of going over the system as a whole, the problem, option to repair, replace, payment options, and then kind of some quick comments and questions or whatever else I'm sure we'll have at the end. Next slide, yep. So I could go into this whole detail in science on the compressor issue, or on the compressor and how the rink gets cold, but I, I found this diagram online. I think it easily describes the best way it works. Our, our main issue, if you look in here at the middle, the bottom of the page, is the chiller. This is where basically heated ammonia goes in and we get a cool, heated ammonia comes out, I'm sorry, goes into the compressor, which is forced up through the condenser, comes back down. We get cold ammonia that goes in, our brine goes around it and then sends it out to the ice arenas as well, and it runs in a series of pipes underneath the rinks themselves. The cold brine, which is then warmed from being under the surfaces, comes back and repeats the cycle. You can see the main components that are involved in this on this sheet. As I said, our main focus is the chiller, the bright orange one right in the middle. If we go to the next slide. The main problem, the chiller, as you can see here, it takes the brine and floods the system. So you'll see refrigerant in, refrigerant out, chilled water in, chilled water out. You're going to replace brine with chilled water and refrigerant is going to be the ammonia in this, for this instance. So in these tubes running back and forth is your, is your brine that's running back and forth inside this coolant of the compress, of the, of the chiller, which is filled with the ammonia. Somewhere at some point in this system, there's hundreds of little rods, anywhere from five eights to three quarters inch wide, that run back and forth with the, with the brine in it. They have, at least one has failed somewhere in there. So the project to tear it apart and look through, find the one, replace, is anticipated to be what the main factor of this issue is. The problem being, if one goes, it's normal that another one is not far behind. This system is twenty-three years old. Anticipated lifespan is probably about twenty-five years. So that's kind of where we sit right now.
Do you want to do any questions on?
Yeah, I can, if we want, any questions on, on where we're at right now.
So what's process? Do you even find it tear it all up?
So the, the entire chiller is actually coated in a insulation. And if you were walk in the room, I didn't take a picture of it because it doesn't do it justice as to, this probably spells it out better. It actually is coated in a real thick insulation. The insulation has to be cut off. It's actually sprayed on and then coated, so you're doing a little bit more work than, I guess, typical, you're thinking of a, you know, regular insulation in a house or anything like that. Then at that point, all of the ammonia has to be drained from the entire system as well. So it has to be completely drained out of the system, removed, and then the ends can be cut off. At this point, you're going to have people with some very in-depth masks and some different things to prepare themselves for whatever may be possible when that does open. At that point, they need to go into the, into the chiller itself, locate the failed tube. If it's one, if it's two, if it's three, we don't know that. It could be ten and we're not really sure. The way the, the repair company has explained it to me, they tend to order about twenty of the tubes and they are special made for each of these instances. So they really can't guess what tube is in that chiller until it's cut open and taken out. And even the manufacturer said during that time period, we did use a couple of different tubes. So yes, we show this, but we've had instances where we've opened it and it was another. So again, this would be cut open, they would be ordered, they would be put in. The main manufacturer for all these tubes of what I was, as I've learned, comes out of Oklahoma and supposedly they make, I guess, ninety percent of chiller tubes in the United States. So learn something new every day. So that's where that sits. If we are, and then if you're getting into best case scenarios, worst case scenarios, that's, we don't know until we get into that system. We have done a brine sample and the brine sample was sent out about a week and a half ago. We still have not received the results. That should give us the saturation of the ammonia in the brine to give us a better indication of how much is leaking when and probably give a good guesstimate of how bad the leak is. It's, it's not going to be an exact science by any means, so it's just going to be more of a guess until things are torn apart and we can put eyes on what's in there. Does that kind of answer any?
And this is for all, this is, this makes, runs it so all the rings have ice?
So you have one chiller that runs all three rinks. Yes. You have, if you, if you want to go back to the slide before, I can kind of explain the entire compressor room as a whole. Where you see the compressor, there's actually three separate compressors and there's three separate brine pumps. So each side of that chiller, you see there would be three of those located in that pattern. There's one condenser on the roof and then, of course, there's three ice rinks. The, the brine pumps themselves and brine motors can be separated out between rinks. The compressors themselves are not separated out between rinks, but they tend to run all three arenas. And then there's one chiller that everything pumps through. So that's kind of where that sits.
Anyone else have any other questions on that? Okay, Nelson?
I have several questions. So you're telling me there's as many as twenty tubes?
No, there's hundreds of tubes in there.
But they said twenty.
What I've told is they will, most, the most likely scenario.
Okay.
And the current, this is all hypothetical without knowing what, tearing it apart, looking in it, and you're going off the experience of contractors and repairs and things of that nature. There's probably one or two that are bad. There could be any number bad. And there'll probably be some with wear and tear on them that will break in the near future. So what they tend to do is they order a cluster of twenty of them when they do order them, so that they can get them in and look. Now, if they, or they may call the company and have them on kind of a standby, so to speak, so that they're pre-making. When they do open it up, if they can tell, as far as they can tell by running of what's there and what leaks are visible, they will usually try to replace any that look potentially bad and they will try to replace any that they can one hundred percent tell are failed. But there's no way to one hundred, there's no way to tell with these steel tubes that run inside that, that unit.
So, okay. How long would the repair take?
Could take weeks, could take months.
Okay.
This, the pricing that we've looked at and what I've gotten into in the next couple of slides, it will include a, a chiller parked outside in the back that we can run things to if we need to try and run the ice rinks at the same time.
Okay.
It might be something where we're only able to run two rinks at one, at that point, but we would do our best to keep as much running as we possibly could.
And the price that's listed here, how many tubes does that get us?
That's, that's, the idea, yeah.
Do the solution stuff after, if that's okay. Yeah, I just don't want to get too far ahead of it.
Okay. And then two, two last questions. What would the increased rate look like? Ice rate?
If you're doing that in the next one.
Yeah, let's, I just wanted to do the system and the problem.
Done, then I have more questions later.
Yeah, well, definitely, we can come back to those for sure.
Thanks, Tim.
No problem.
Councilman Pay.
I have a question about our, is the whole unit twenty-three years old or have we already replaced some pieces of it, you said? Have we cut it open at all ever?
That, that unit has never been cut open.
Okay. So we could potentially have a hundred tubes in there broken, the whole thing.
Hypothetically, yes.
Hypothetically, right. Okay. Or we could just have one. What, at what point did we notice that was a problem?
Uh, Dean, what morning did you get a really, no. I would say within, I would say within the last two weeks, three weeks.
Okay, so is there some indicator that we tried to put the ice back in to get ready for the season and it just isn't setting well?
Well, we, we constantly are doing maintenance and repairs on the system as a whole. The system is kind of like a, you know, a car with a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it at this point. So we're trying to put as, we, we are constantly working on maintenance on it. We're constantly going through different things. As we were in there doing some other things, we noticed the fact that you had, the, the ammonia level had dropped. And it's not something that you would really, it's really hard to see, so to speak, but you can, you can gauge it out by a couple of different things that we were doing. So, and that, that kind of alerted us to there may be an issue. The contractor that was in there working at the time pulled the brine out and looked in there and he goes, well, here's, here's a nice potent smell. So we had an indication of where it was coming from.
All right, thank you.
Are you good, buddy?
Yep.
All right, let's go on to the next one here. Repair and replacement options.
So repair, the initial estimate for repair is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand. That includes temporary chiller hookup, temporary chiller outside the building, a hookup and repair replacement of one tube in the system. I say one tube because we don't, again, we don't know how many, we don't know what the additional costs are. As we get into more tubes, the cost could increase depending on if they're inside or outside. The best comparison I can think of off the top of my head right at the moment is a radiator for a car. When you look at that and you ask, you know, somebody at a radiator place to look at those, they're going to pressure test them to see where any potential leaks are. If they're in the middle of the radiator and they cannot be repaired or replaced, they have to replace it. Well, it's usually more cost effective that way if you're getting into center, you know, center pieces of it that can't easily be accessed. Hypothetically, these should be all able to access from one end and we will do those tests after we're done making the repairs that we know, but it's not going to, it's not going to prepare or alleviate any potential hazards in the future. That's the repair issue. That's, so I guess what I'm getting at on the repair is it's initially a hundred and fifty thousand. We don't know what it could be after it's opened up. We don't know where we could go or what we could do. Additional issues, the entire compressor and chiller unit is twenty-three years old. So as we go back, if we, you're thinking of that other picture that we had up there, those compressors are twenty-three year old engines. I, I've been told to compare them to two V sixes and a V eight that sit in there. So the top ends do need to be completely rebuilt on those. Those are done usually typically every five to, five to seven years on average anyway. We have pumps in there that need to be looked at and replaced. We have replaced some motors on our brine pumps in the past and we still have one original one that is in there that will need to be replaced. There is some other systematic issues with piping and things that need to be scraped and repainted and sealed and things of that nature. Again, these are maintenance issues that come up, especially at twenty-five years. You know, the interesting part is we look at our, our old compressor system that may have been in the, the original Tyfer rink and that one lasted, what, sixty, you know, sixty plus years. So those are, unfortunately, it's not, they're not made the same as they used to be. And, and we're looking at some of those issues that we will face going forward. The replacement of the system has been in a capital outlook for at least the last two years. We initially put it into the capital projects for replacement in twenty twenty-six, then got moved back to twenty twenty-seven in the last one that we put forth. The estimated cost originally, which I'm going off of probably two or three years ago, was about seven hundred and fifty thousand. Since that time, we have seen the system price increase to about one point three million. There may be some additional pieces into there, but I, we're not looking anything more than, you know, ten thousand or twenty thousand dollars more that would increase that than that initial seven hundred seventy, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. The majority of that increase is just basically the parts, time and effort to put that back together. There is an option to replace the system now. Should limit our, should limit our surprises over the next few years as it reaches its full anticipated lifespan. A replacement would include updated, more efficient control system and many safety modifications and much more. So those are different things that we would see. I'll, I'll briefly talk, talk on this, but Jill is probably the better person to talk. But this is some options of how to pay for it. If we did look at a ten-year loan, a ten-year repayment option would average approximately two hundred and one thousand per year. The Kennedy Recreation Center would be able to make the payment based on a few factors. One would be an increased ice rate, which you had asked about, Mr. Perugia. And I think what we, what we see and where we know we're at with an ice rate right now, we are still probably one of the lower end ice rinks in the state of Michigan. Anywhere north of us on the north side of Detroit is easily sixty, seventy, seventy dollars more an hour per ice. We would probably looking at going up anywhere from twenty to thirty dollars per hour. It fits in line with our costs that have been increasing over time anyway. There has been additional rental income with some, with one major team coming into play and some potential other locker room rentals that we may be looking at. And then we would be looking at less spent on repairs and maintenance over a time period. So, and I believe there were some questions on that, so I don't know if anybody wants. Do you want to ask questions now or do you want to go to the second one? The other option that was presented to us was a five-year loan and a five-year repayment option with an average of three hundred and fifty one thousand dollars per year. The K R C would have a much harder time making that payment each year based on the outlook that we're looking. So that's where the differences play in between the two currently.
All right, questions now? Councilman Perugia, do you want to, oh, sorry. Okay, do you want to do yours, Nelson? Then we'll go to Timber.
Doesn't matter to me. So you answered the question about how much you plan on increasing the ice. What is the gap, as it stands now, of your opportunity to rent the ice more? So are you eighty percent capacity, ninety percent capacity? So what does that number look like that you're going to try to grab?
Let me put it this way. There was a conversation we had this morning. We had a power outage over on Saturday and it potentially, it did do some damage with the heat to one of the rinks, the newest rink we put in. So of course, we're scrambling just to get it up because today is our first day back, so to speak, for fall. All three sheets running, the whole shot. And we said, when can we repaint that rink and when can we look at it? Right now, I would say that there is zero opportunity between now and spring break or Easter of next year for us to make any repairs or replacements to the rink as a whole. So we are booked solid. We've even, we've even brought in groups during the daytime. We have a homeschool group that skates once a week for, I think they doubled their times, so now they're up to about four hours a day. We do freestyle lessons for some college kids that are, that are around. We do open skating for anybody that may be home for young, with younger kids or anything of that nature. So there is, we just stick some pucks for seniors. So we have a lot of things that are going on throughout the day, basically from eight thirty A M. and on.
Well, you had mentioned, maybe I misunderstood, that you, you tested at the end of the repair. I mean, do you, obviously you must try to test it before you're finished with the repair to find out where the weak links are, right?
When the contractor, you're going back to when they would tear it apart, look in it, make some repairs. They would try to go off of what they can see first to make the repair. They would do a pressure test at the end of the repair to see if there was anything missed and then go back there to make any replacements that they could. The problem being is the fact that not knowing exactly, it may pass the pressure test then, get it all sealed back up and it may fail next week. We don't know.
Okay. Well, just two more items. And is this a Band-Aid or is this?
As we look, as we look at a, so if we were looking at the, the option to repair, it's a, it's a kick a can or put a Band-Aid on it for right now.
Okay. And what, what, where are we going to go if this repair, how are we going to manage the deficit and the gap of money that we're planning on here? Just say one point five. And we get into this thing and we're at two and a half. Where are we getting the other million?
Well, that one is a, that, that we're looking at a set cost. So if we're looking at one point five million, that's a replacement of the entire system. And I apologize if I didn't do a good enough job of explaining that. But yes, we're one point five, we're looking at replacing the entire system in there.
Okay.
So all the compressors, all the pumps, all of the chiller, evaporative condenser, everything.
Thanks for the feedback and thanks, Tim. I'm done, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Buncrux?
Um, yeah, question, Tim. You're talking about subsidies. Has there been any subsidies from the general fund towards the rink? Has there been any subsidies from the general fund towards the rink in the last year? Or has it been self-sustaining?
I will, I know I could answer that, but I will, I will defer to Jill just to make sure I'm on the right page.
Okay. Okay. Did they make any money?
A little bit, yes. They were in the positive.
What's a little bit?
Maybe $100,000.
Nice job, too.
The year isn't quite wrapped up yet for fiscal '23.
Okay.
Until August, so I don't have an exact number yet. But when I just ran a report earlier today, they were around $100,000.
Okay, so the Kennedy Recreation, to me, is the center at a whole. The, you know, the rink, the pool, the whole facility there, to me, has to sustain itself. And we know that the pool is losing a couple hundred thousand dollars a year usually. It was using, like, losing like a quarter of a million because it's a seasonal, you know, recreation type thing. Which leads me back to, so for $100,000 good on one side of the rink and one side of the thing, they were losing money in the pool. So, really the center itself is losing money. But it's a, to me, I love it all, it's a perk for living in Trenton. I mean, recreation's a lot of the reason people live here. But that's why, and I, and I know it's not popular and that's why I say and I bring it up over and over because I've been here a long time and I've seen the money that we spend. And to me, that's why I don't want to spend $50,000 on fireworks. When this kind of stuff is, to me, mandatory, we've got a facility there to keep up, Tim. And to me, I, we want all the perks and we want everything that goes, you know, the residents love and all the out-of-towners. But we gotta start making some money. We gotta start thinking about, you know, every event that we do in town, downtown, everywhere, every fair and market and everything we do around here, we gotta think about making some money. The festival, gotta make some money. If we have to charge more for these events and the city gets a portion of it, we've got to start looking at this kind of stuff. Because to me, it's all a part of recreation for this community. And I, I don't want to put a Band-Aid on things. Because I think, you know, are we kicking the can down the road? But there's a lot of things that if I'm gonna vote on this stuff, I, I, some of the stuff I think we could do without doing, it's a waste of money when this is something that, we've got a $10 million facility that we invested in over there, that rink, when we redid it, and it's an investment that we have to maintain, in my estimation. I mean, Trenton's hockey town, it's a, you know, it's part of it. But I'm just, I don't even mean to rattle on, but this is the kind of stuff that we have to look at. And, you know, it's, 10-year loans, a long time at a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. I mean, I'd rather see us do a smaller loan, not so far down the road. 10 years, you know what's gonna happen? What if we have a recession, what if something happens and we gotta spend another couple hundred thousand dollars a year down there? So, you know, I'd rather do something like a little less, you know, less loan amount if we're gonna do it. You know, I don't know what's exactly in the general fund, if we're gonna take some money from there. But, you know, I'm not an engineer, I just know that, you know, we gotta start looking at the whole picture. That's all, I'm done.
Tim, do you wanna, I know we had talked about it earlier, but talk about, you know, I know Councilman Perugia asked as well about the potential rate adjustments and things like that and how that might be able to balance some of it.
Yeah, right now, if we looked at a potential, the rate adjustment that we talked about, we're looking at potentially an additional $140,000. So, that, that does have a large cut into that portion. We are looking at additional rentals for locker rooms, that was already in the works. We do have another high school team coming over this fall. We anticipate there would be an ice time increase with them being here of, kind of the, of a difference of another team. And we see some different things where we would, we would probably, we spent about $30,000 last year in maintenance and repair cost to maintain our compressor system with our, you know, with different things that we did on there. So, we anticipate probably 20,000 of that coming out. So, there is some things that we were looking at and how we should be able to reduce those costs and be able to put it more towards that payment as well.
Councilman Benad, did you have other questions?
Yeah, so he talked about the rate. So, you're telling us that it's probably 60 bucks less than what's there north of here. I guess my question is, what's here still? Southgate has one, right?
Southgate, Windut, Lincoln Park, and us?
Allen Park.
Allen Park, sorry.
Okay. How, do we compare less than M2?
Huh?
Do we compare less than M2?
No, we're probably, we, we are probably, and I may have misstated when I say that, but Downriver area as a whole is probably less than everybody else. Southgate, Windut usually tend to follow whatever our rates are set at, they go right behind, around the same. U of M Dearborn is probably another one. Dearborn itself is the most comparable, municipality-run, working to constantly fill the facility. Their rates are about the same as well, so.
But we're the...
If you look at, if you look outside of Downriver, once we get north of Detroit, you're, you're easily at $320 an hour for ice.
Yeah, but I guess...
You're getting west of here, you're $320.
Looking around here, so I don't know off the top of my head, so, I know Southgate doesn't have three.
They have two.
Yeah, they have two, Allen Park has...
One.
One.
Windut has one, Lincoln Park has one.
Yeah. I think 20, 30 bucks is too cheap, but, and I got a grandson that's gonna start skating this year.
What we, I mean, the other part too that we look at...
I'm not paying for it, his father's.
What we look at too is trying to break out on an average team of 15 people on an average team. And what's that cost gonna influence on each of the parents as we look at that as well, so. We know it's an expensive sport, they realize it, but...
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
We're definitely providing a whole lot of...
I think you gotta put your mic...
I appreciate it very much. So, basically, what you're saying is, is that eventually it could actually cost us more money if we continue to do the preventative maintenance and pay for like any surprises as opposed to an entire replacement?
If we, if we get into the system, I don't anticipate it costing 1.3 million if we get into the repair. However, I think if we're, it's a Band-Aid on it for that point in time. Is there gonna be something else that goes on? Is there gonna be an increase in costs over the next two or three years? That's about the only thing, if we look at our recent, that I can guarantee, but...
Yeah, that's what I'm really concerned about if another issue pops up, that it'll end up costing more. So, with the, with the option for a replacement, is that system is, I assume that it is far more advanced than what we've got now that is 23 to 25 years old?
So, I did reach out to two different companies. I reached out to one that was the initial company that put the system in, which is Simco System. They're out of Canada. Their estimate was a lot higher. And I reached out to a local company that's based out of Plymouth, Northville. Theirs came in at the, you know, right around what we, the numbers that we have talked about here. Talking with both companies, actually, interestingly enough, when I was speaking to the Canadian company, they, they basically said, "So, can you talk to DTE and get an increased amount of electricity?" I went, "Huh?" He goes, "Well, you, you know," I said, "That just seems contradictory to what they, you know, of course, on their webpage, it's all about going green and trying to find the cleaner way of doing it and everything else." And I asked him about that and he said, "Well, yes, we use less, we'll use less, you know, refrigerant." I said, "Okay, but the refrigerant stays in the system, we gotta pay for the electricity each week." So, those are, those are things that some of the other companies have looked at. Are they far more capable of maintaining coolant and probably not running as much? Yes. What I understand, the startup of the system is what this gentleman was referring to. So, when the system actually kicks on, it takes a little bit more of a boost to get it going. Talking with the contractor that was local, he anticipated probably the same or less, which was more along what I was trying to wrap my head around, so.
So, with the five-year and the 10-year, I'm not sure if this is the answer for Julie. There's a huge difference in regards to the interest rate. Did we look at anything in between, like maybe seven-year or six-year and what that interest rate would be for the loan?
So, Jill said we did not. But it was, I think the interest rate difference was 6.2 to 6.4, 5. And looking at it in between, I know there was some questions that... I don't know. I was gonna see if you wanted to answer that.
Yeah, we only did look at the five and the 10-year. You know, one of the things, when, if you're gonna consider taking on the debt or whatever, I mean, there's, the good side is this would be a 20-year asset that would take us 10 years to pay down. Going to the five-year, I would discourage counsel from going that direction. Yes, money is not as cheap as it was. I don't have a problem with Timber's idea of paying down, so we're financing a little bit less. But from a budgetary standpoint, stretching ourselves over the next couple of years to a five- or a seven-year financing, 10-year is probably affordable and we can do it. If rates come down, we can refinance that debt at a later, at a later time. But I would be very concerned putting a $300,000-plus payment on the books coming out next year when we really are looking at realistically, you know, we can increase revenue 100 and, 140, 160 and we can be right there in some decreased costs. It might be close to a push, but doubling that would be really, I wouldn't recommend it. So, it's, unfortunately, money is more expensive right now than it is, but, you know, the rates, the rates should come down over time. The other, the other thing for counsel to consider, and I just want to get a clear, we want to get a consensus or a direction. You don't have, nothing's gonna go through for you officially tonight, but at least what I'm getting from you is there's not a lot of interest in putting a Band-Aid on it, $150,000 Band-Aid. So, we'd like to get the direction from y'all on that. One of the things that is a possibility, I'm not recommending it, I'm just in the middle on it. We could do the Band-Aid method and maybe we would be at the point a year from now where we were going to the voters to address all of our building issues. But, right, well, we're moving on, you're gonna, you're gonna see the building assessment within the next 30 days, but the bid for it and everything. So, we just want to get clear...
Not the assessment itself?
Not the assessment itself, that'll take another 60 days. But, so, it would be very helpful if we get a good consensus so he can narrow his direction and then when we get the ammonia results, so we maybe have a wild ask, wild, wild guess. Sorry about that. Well, I mean, that's what we really call it, right?
Wild ask.
Wild asked guess. Then, then we can move down that road. But I just want to be clear so that there, I want to make sure there's no real sincere appetite for putting a Band-Aid on it. You'd rather do it right, do it once. And we just need that affirmative for you. And then, I mean, if you guys are really bent on some other revenue option, you know, we can, we can look at it, but we priced ourselves out of the market. It's gonna be something maybe over a two- or three-year period, we can get to that $60 increase and it'll, it'll cover things. So, just want to make sure we, we don't adjourn without guidance. Thank you.
So, one last question. So, do we have, I know we do have some loans that we're going to be falling off soon, correct?
One just fell off last year, big one, in '22.
So, Tim's gotta do some of the tests.
This was the first year the rink was able to pay the money well loan back to the general fund. So, there's still three more payments on that. There's one thing that's left for fiscal '24, about $110,000. That would be falling off.
Okay.
So, with that big $600,000 falling off, I guess they were able to make all the other decisions.
Okay, thank you, that's all, thanks.
And, oh, Councilman Buncrux?
I have a question for Dean. So, you're talking about doing an assessment of all the buildings and possibly going for a bond for the residents to vote on?
Yes.
For a total assessment of all the...
Right, so, so what we did, I know, whatever, you'll recall, during the budget, we put aside 50, I think it was $50,000 to do a full assessment, similar to the one that Mayor Stack had done just on the West Field in 2018, '17 or '18 or something. So, yeah, well, I've already pressed ahead and had meetings, we're gonna try to get the specs together so that y'all can make an informed decision of what, because, you know, all we, all we can do is sit there and go, "Oh, well, we think the rink needs 2 million, we think this building needs this." Get the professionals in here, get a good look at it, then you guys can make a decision. The next step after you get a price tag, in my opinion, would be then it's the direction. Do you want to, do you, do you want to go down that route? Do you want to just take that price tag and go to the voters? Do you want to consolidate, change up buildings, do something different or whatever? Those can all be hashed out. My, my goal would be, this is a goal, don't be hounding me at Christmas time, Wendy. But I would like to have the assessment results back to you. I'm shooting for the end of the year. I mean, honestly, it'll probably be at the end of January. But if we can get the results and, and stay on a timeline where we don't just push it aside, I think a good cohesive plan to put to the voters or not put to the voters would be, we could have it in our sights by spring.
Okay, so you think...
Early summer.
So, you think that this repair here or this replacement could be a part of that bond issue?
Well, if you wanted to Band-Aid it, yeah, it might. But, see, here's the difficulty. So, let's say in a perfect world, we got through the assessment and we got everything together and you guys said, "Okay, it's," and I'm just throwing a hypothetical number out there, "It's $20 million to do everything we want to do." So, you decide, "All right, we're gonna go to the voters." Probably we'd be back, I mean, realistic timeframe, I'd like it sooner, but realistically, it would be before the voters by November of next year. Then it would get into the planning and the phasing and, and, you know, we got the...
It'd be two years.
It would be two years before we probably have realistic shovels in the ground. Now, one opportunity I suspect we can do is if you do this and whatever the number is, ends up being 1 million, 1.3, 1.5, whatever, does, I know I'm hundreds of thousands of dollars, but I'm just saying, whatever number you pick and we, and we go with that route, we probably would have the opportunity to roll that into or make that all part of the, part of the same project. But, I mean, there's no, there's no guarantees, no guarantees of voters or you guys are even gonna reach a consensus, right? But we would still have to sell it to the voters, so it's unfortunate timing. I would much rather this be a year from now. But, yeah. So, I don't know if that answers your... Yes, well, I will have numbers to you sooner than later. You know, I don't want things said.
Councilman Perugia?
Sorry, Steve. So, I guess my next question, this is tongue-in-cheek, but could you charge the high school more? Because they came across $57 million, I just thought maybe you could charge them a little bit more. The next serious thing is, I'm gonna deal with the elephant in the room. Is, is there an advantage at some point to outsource the rinks and sell it off?
My, my personal opinion is you...
My, my personal opinion is you can look at two different rinks that this occurred in, actually, three in, in the local area that this happened with. Monroe, which is currently shuttered. You had Taylor, which ended up dumping a ton of money back into the facility once the, once the other people could not make payments back to the city. And three was Lincoln Park, which as soon as the, when they went through their bankruptcy, that was one of the first things they did was kick them out.
Okay, well, I, I just asked that question so people can hear it.
That's all.
I support the rink, but, you know, if we don't throw that out on the table as something we've entertained or at least investigated and looked at, I think we wouldn't be doing our job.
Nope, definitely.
So, I just appreciate the answer, and that's it for me, Mayor.
Cool, thank you. Anyone else? So, in terms of next steps then, Tim, I, I think you'd mentioned it briefly earlier too, but about the testing you got over the next week or so, do you want to just recap that? And then I think we'll be looking for some sort of indication hopefully by next, next meeting, not tonight, but following from there.
As, as Dean said, you know, we'll be getting, we'll hopefully get the test results back in the next week from the brine sample, and it'll give us an indication of how much potentially has saturated into the brine itself. It may give a guesstimate as to what that leak is, and we'll kind of go from there. But that would, it's, it's all, it's all gonna be a guessing game, but that'll give us a somewhat of an indication.
Dean, you mentioned you're looking for us, and I have no problem. So, for me, it's like, okay, if we wait, and you read the one paragraph here, they guesstimated it to be 750 and found out two years later, oh, it's double that. So, I understand what you said with your thing about we could wait, put it in a millage, if we put it out there, and then we're looking at 200, or 2.7 million, or, so, and to put 150 in it, and a year later, Tim comes back and knocks on the door and says, oh, by the way, we have to do it all over again. So I guess, you know, if you're looking, not that I want to, because some people here know my feelings on some of that stuff. It's something we have to do, because you're right, if we sell it, which we owe the residents that option to tell them that, it'll end up running into the ground, the guy'll take his money and leave, and we've seen it done everywhere else, so, I'm good with it, we'll figure it out.
Well, I, I think that, you know, we go the 10-year route, we could, you know, if the market changes, we can always refinance to get the lower rate. But if we lock in at five, that, that might be a little tough to make that payment, plus I don't know how much movement there'll be on interest rates in a five-year window, so, I just, my thoughts on that.
Any last questions or thoughts for this? Because I think, yeah, we won't need a formal decision tonight, but we'll see how things shake out over the next week, week and a half, and have something probably on the 18th here. So, anyone else?
Can I just make sure what the, yeah, there's nobody that's-
I, I think, unless, barring any, I mean, feel free to interject here, but is everyone relatively okay with exploring that 10-year financing option and not Band-Aiding?
Yes, I am.
Let's, yeah, just informally, of course, and we'll have more information in two weeks, but just, yeah, want to make sure, that's, thank you, Dean. All right, any last things before we adjourn here? Take a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Move and support, adjourned at 6:45.
Thank you.
All right, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Von Kriex?
Here.
Benedetti?
Here.
Kim Waden?
Present.
Pete?
Here.
Pruegi?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rezepa?
Here.
Coram present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item we have here is minute approval of the August 21st, '23 regular meeting. Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered, thank you. Next up, under Presentations and Proclamations, City Administrator Dean Creach is gonna do a brief presentation for us to update everyone on storm situation- to update everyone on storm situation, sewer system, give some information there. If we had a motion to make this part of the regular meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Feel free to get started, Dean.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just want to bring everybody up to date. I'm gonna run through some slides here. Hopefully give you more information. I've tried to communicate with you as the process went along and we, I think we did a decent job of getting info out to the public, but I just feel it's more appropriate for us to put this here so you can go back and reference it going forward. If I could have the first slide up there. It's one of the rare times I get to tell the mayor what to do. So, this is-
Relish in it while you can.
This is, in reference to the storm, August 23, 24, 25, in that time period, the storm and then the accompanying flood damage. Let me just start out by saying, I know we don't really have many people from the public here, but having personally been through basement flooding on a couple of occasions myself, where lost everything that was in the basement and carpeting and the drywall and everything, I, I don't want any of this information to be construed or the stuff I put out there as being unempathetic or anything. Everybody in City Hall, council included, is very, very empathetic. We, we feel bad for, for everyone. A number of us have been through this type of thing before, so we're just trying to work through it the, the best we can, but I just wanted to make that real, real clear that this isn't just the city administrator spouting some stuff off. I truly have been in their shoes before. So, objectives, we're just gonna go over an event overview, an overview of the storm, what actually occurred, a little education on the sewer and storm system, some issues that came up and kinda round out with the status and everything of where we're at today. So, early in the morning of August 24th, the city of Trenton got somewhere between 4.7 and 5.9 inches of rain. Largely it was, you know, between 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM was, was the bulk of the rain. If you look at this next map here, it gives you a couple of valid rain points and you can see by the different colors and everything in there where it was heaviest in different areas. It's kinda, if you go just a little bit north, you know, they didn't have many issues, but from Trenton, south, you know, into Rockwood, Gibraltar and everything, Brownstown, of course Canton, everybody heard about significant, significant issues. And it, you know, it caused catastrophic damage in some, some areas, but the bulk of that rain was in about a five hour period. There was an additional half inch of rain that was about 20 hours later that was not helpful. It had more wind and storm damage related to it, which resulted in some power outages. I don't think we had more than 80 without power at any given time. So that was, those were all good things. So, basic timeline, if you want to shrink that, there we go. Started early Thursday, the 24th. By 11:30 AM wastewater treatment was at capacity. That includes them putting 20 million gallons of sewage basically into the retention basins. And they, they notified Eagle and they went on bypass, so if you hear, you see some social media comments about we didn't go on by, we did. It was the first time in nine years and it was absolutely the right call at the right time. So we bypassed to the river, notified Eagle. DPW started the day out in full force responding to mitigating every complaint and there were a lot of them. You know, there were flooded roads, there was, there were people getting water in their basement. We had trees come down on people's cars, on their houses, different things like that and whatever. And they, they were out in full force, really, really worked hard and, and worked well. And I can't compliment the wastewater treatment plant personnel and your DPW workers. Outstanding. From beginning to end, they did a great job. You, as residents, you're getting first-class, high priority service and my hat's off to, to both of those divisions. You know, police and fire always do a great job, day in and day out and, you know, they seem to be there, but this was an emergency that really, DPW and wastewater shined through it. So, very, very happy with it. Cleanup and recovery, it was just DPW working a lot and they were very active. They had, they had to do 250 special pickups. We did not charge the residents. That was another, you know, question that was out there. What are we gonna, you know, that was not even a, a question. I can guarantee, you know, council was aware and it was really a no-brainer decision, honestly. The results, about 290 addresses have had water damage of some kind. A lot of them are an inch or two or three or whatever. There are a handful that had more damage. And, and some of them, we weren't even actually notified. We just, they needed a special pickup. They didn't really call in. We had stuff at the curb, but we attended to it. But as the calls came in, everything was responded to. There was nothing missed. Multiple visits, lots and lots of communication with the residents, trying to give them the information, try to keep them informed. Really did a great job. So we had flooded streets, basement, basement water, we had alley water, branches of trees down and like I said, 80 homes with, without power. So, a little information about our system. In this, I'll just run through this real quick, but I'm gonna try to give you the education so you can, you know, answer questions and everything. We got 77.3 miles of wet separated gravity sewer. So yes, we have a separated sewer system, but ours is a wet separated, which means the drain tile, which I'll cover on the next screen, the drain tile takes water off your property and dumps it into the sanitary sewer. That's easiest way. In the old days, back before 1974, you had your downspouts that went into the system and ran out, but that obviously, that didn't work well. But we, we do still have a wet system. 1800, almost 1800 manholes, four pump stations, emergency bypass, 20 million gallon retention basin. It's actually two, two basins that are about 10 million each. Design capacity is about 6 million gallons through the wastewater plant on a daily basis. Average through wastewater on a non-rain day is 2.5 to 2.7 million gallons. Peak, which they were operating at peak for about three days, is 16.5 million gallons in a day. Just for context, we have, and you can look up our report on the wastewater system and the storm system or anything online, but we have a very robust, right-sized wastewater treatment plant and our system overall is, is, it's robust. It is good. We have our own wastewater treatment plant. Most communities pump to Wayne County or some other wastewater treatment plant. We have our own, we control our own, we own it. And it's, it's a good thing. So, next slide. This will give you a little bit of information on how a, how the water, since there was tons of confusion and, and believe me, I've learned more about water and storm drains than I ever wanted to know in my lifetime, but so, if you take a drop, a bucket of water and it, and it comes down, it's gonna go down into the drain tile around, around your house. To move it off the property, it's gonna go in and it's gonna actually dump into the city sewer. So, if you, if you think of, if you think of it where that water's gotta travel, it's gotta get away from your property. So it's gotta move in one direction or another. We have, almost everything is gravity fed. We do have some pumps that are used or whatever, but gravity is gonna dictate where it's gonna go. So it's, whether it goes to the back of the property, the front of the property, but it's gonna flow out. And the wet part of it, which is just your, your tile around your house, your drain tile around your house, is gonna go into the sewer system. So, next slide. Alright, so our system is one of the very few that was built to, this is one of those trivia things, built to the 100-year 24-hour storm level. I didn't know there was different ones, but Trenton was required to be able to handle 4.7 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. A lot of the communities in the area are only held to the standard of 25, 25-year standard, which is 3.9 inches in a 24-hour period. We took 4.7 inches in about a five-hour period. There, this was clearly an act of God or whatever you wanna call it, 100-year storm. 100-year storm's kind of a misnomer because all it is, it's statistically a 1% storm. But there, there is no system built in this region that could handle that amount of water in that short a period of time. None. Nobody, nobody's got it. That's why other cities had a lot more flooding problems. Not diminishing the, the flooding issues that we did have. But it, it just simply was, was not manageable. So, the next slide, there, there was one issue. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it, Mr. Mayor. And so we did have one blockage of one line impacting about 13 homes and they got an exceptionally, they, they got, they got more water than most. The, the issue was responded to immediately. The DPW crews got out there, assessed it and it, the blockage appears to have originated from a contractor performing unpermitted work that has caused, caused a 90% blockage. So basically, a contractor put a pipe lining in that went all the way into our sewer, okay? So the resident is responsible for their house to the hookup into our sewer. They, this contractor put this, put it into our sewer and if you think about it, it came down that pipe I showed earlier and it made a turn and it occluded about 90% of the flow from our pipe. So those 13 homes that were hooked up on it suffered much, much more damage and took on a lot more water than the other 280-odd homes. We're working on that. There are gonna be some legal stuff that we, we will deal with as, as it goes on, but it, it's been corrected. We had to use a combination of our DPW workers and a contractor to come in and cut this mess out and, and get it right. And I think we're, we're in a lot, I know we're in a lot better spot now. And we, we did hand deliver letters to the impacted residents today, letting them know, you know, that there's, there is a process underway and everything. We encourage them to file a Public Act 222 claim with the city, which will just kinda keep the ball rolling on, on things so that everything can be addressed in a, in a timely fashion. So, summary, real simple. The, the system functioned as designed, even though some people are annoyed, oh, they had water and everything else. It, the system was overwhelmed. It, it carried all the water the way it's supposed to. It's, we just don't have a system that could handle a five-hour rain event like, like it did. The state and the county have declared disasters. The federal process takes a little longer. I don't know if we'll get a declaration out of the federal government. That does change things up where they would engage with FEMA. I've been a part of that before for national disasters, natural disasters. So, you know, if that happens, that would be great, but it's not something that's gonna happen in the next couple of days. It's a, it's a lengthy process, but they would put boots on the ground if it was declared and they would do damage assessments and all these other things. So it's real important for the people that are digging out and cleaning up to document, take pictures and keep track of, of everything on how they were impacted. Like I said, residents can submit a claim with, with the city at City Hall. There's online forums you can use as long as it complies with Public Act 222. We recommend you document and supply pictures. It'll initially be forwarded to our insurer and that'll start the whole, the whole process. There's also online, there's an opportunity to make note of your address through Wayne County. We have a link on the website for you. You can just click on it and you can fill it out. And then, just so people understand, because there's a lot of misinformation, but pursuant to Public Act 222, the affected residents are encouraged to submit a claim, but please note that submitting a claim does not guarantee coverage nor does the city admit they are liable for any claims. And that was required for me to say from our legal counsel, just to be clear. And I don't, I also don't wanna set any expectations that are insane, so it's, it's gonna be a little bit of a haul. That's pretty, pretty much all I have. I just really want to reiterate, Mr. Haley kept me updated on everything, every address, putting out multiple maps and updates. He was around town today with Wayne County who was onsite and saw a couple of the homes and, and got to know the lay of the land, whatever, in Trenton. And then, once again, just Julie and the crew at wastewater and Kevin Sargent and the troops over at DPW. Indispensable. Just really, really did an awesome job for, for the community and everything. That's it.
Any questions for Dean here?
Thank you.
It was easy.
Cool. Thank you very much, Dean. I appreciate it.
Sure.
And if any residents at home, yes, have any questions or need any assistance with that, please contact us at City Hall too, but. Cool. Thank you very much. Alright, next item we have on the agenda, a public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment is only for items that are on today's agenda. We'll have another opportunity for all other public, public comment later. Anyone wishing to speak, please direct all questions through me. Begin with your name and address and please limit your comments to five minutes. And we'll move right on along. Next up here, we have two items under general. First off here, and thank you for Councilwoman Pete for facilitating this as well here, but for Semcog. And actually, there's a Semcog delegate if you want to take this one too, that'd be great.
Oh, yes, I can do that. Let me just get to the right spot in the agenda here online. Alright, and am I reading the entire resolution? All right. And am I reading the entire resolution?
Uh, you don't, you don't have to do that. No, thanks.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion then to, sorry, I'm...
Approve the resolution.
This is an iPad we're touching. It's all over the place. All right. I move to approve the resolution in support of the proposed Wayne County design for the West Road Bridge.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you.
Sorry about the technical glitch there.
A-okay. But yeah, so it's in support of a proposed design of the West Road Bridge just replacement that would include bike lane as well for bike travel there too. Next up, Madam Clerk, if you wanted to take this one from Small Biz Buys, the trunk or treat?
Sure. So the Small Biz Buys is asking for permission to hold a trunk or treat at the Kennedy Recreation Center parking lot on Sunday, October fifteenth. And this would be from four PM to six PM under the direction of the police department.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next up, we have from our city administrator, or updated memorandum of understanding with the Wayne County Land Bank.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you just have an updated Wayne County Land Bank agreement, this is in relation to demolition of the old water plant. And they're going to be able to fund a little more of the project than we initially thought. So that funding amount is ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. And I would ask for your approval to allow the mayor or his designated to execute the agreement.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next up, from our city attorney, we have ordinance number eight-one-six, mending DDA second reading.
Yes, this is the, this is the second reading of the amendment that was originally approved a few weeks ago on the DDA and I ask to be approved.
It's all moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you all for that. Next up, we have from our controller, Ms. Cooper, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, LIH WAP extension.
Yes, so in December of twenty-one, council approved an agreement with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the Community Action Agency to participate in the LIWAP program, which stands for Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. So they just help alleviate past due balances for residents that are facing difficult times. So we just need, are looking to extend the agreement through March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. So we go, support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously sorted. Thank you, Jill. Next up, from our DPS director, Mr. Sargent, request to purchase water meters.
Thanks, Mayor. Our city replaces water meters on a daily basis due to old age or failure while updating to the newest smart technology. Trenton utilizes Neptune Technology Group as its sole provider of water meters and reading devices. These water meters are only sold through one distributor in the state of Michigan and they are Ferguson Waterworks. There is still a supply chain shortage, so the lead time on this order will be up to one year. Therefore, to avoid any disruption to our service and any impending price increases, I'm requesting to purchase this bulk order of water meters from Ferguson Waterworks in the amount of fifty thousand, twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents. These funds are budgeted in the residential meter and equipment account.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Peruzzi.
Yes, Kevin, with that backlog, supply chain issue, I'm just asking, is, is this going to be enough to help you?
Yeah, so we did the same thing last year because they had a backlog last year. So we're still working off that large order from last year. This will get us through a whole nother year. So I'm trying to stay a year in advance here.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, it's unanimously sorted. Thank you. All right. Looks like we have one late item tonight. Madam Clerk, if you wanted to take that, from the Knights of Columbus Annual Tootsie Roll Drive.
Sure, thank you. The Knights of Columbus is asking for permission to hold their annual Tootsie Roll Drive on Saturday, October seventh and Sunday, October eighth in the city of Trenton, and this would be under the direction of the police department.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go to our dispersments and statements and then our reports now, so I will defer to our Mayor Proton, Councilwoman Pate.
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve the authorized dispersments of September fifth, twenty-twenty-three in the amount of three million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and seven cents.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
I'd like to move to receive and place on file the cultural commission minutes of July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission minutes of July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, and the retiree healthcare benefit plan board meeting minutes of August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
One more item. I'd like to move to convene to a closed session immediately following the regular meeting for the purpose of discussing litigation and potential litigation.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? And we can just stay in here for that as soon as this wraps up. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti?
Yes.
Kebawattan?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Peruzzi?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rezepa?
Yes.
Von Crux?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Comments from council and officials. I just had a couple of things this evening. I know Dean had touched on it during his presentation, but I just have to give a big, big thank you to everyone at DPW, at Waste Water and Emergency Management as well. So Kevin, Ryan, Julie, Paul, you and your entire teams. I know it was honestly a couple of days of seemingly all hell breaking loose, but you guys did an absolutely amazing job. I know I was, I was talking to Congresswoman Dingell about it a couple of days ago and then even some of her staff about what they were having to deal with everywhere else in Wayne County. And, you know, it's two hundred and fifty claims for homes with water. And I mean, that's far and away, in the last, you know, ten years I've been around here, you know, the most we've ever had since we've been here. But there were portions of neighboring communities that, I guess, you know, when you extrapolate that, it's, you know, three, four percent of the city had water in their homes. And there was, you know, in one of our neighboring communities, there was some sections that had almost ninety percent. So it's, you know, unfortunately, all about perspective in this context. But, you know, the way that everything was cleaned up after, it, you know, could not have gone better. And I, I just cannot say how much I appreciate that and I know how much our residents do as well. So thank you all very, very much for that. The other, actually, one thing that I'll kind of need some of your feedback on here from everyone. I just wanted to get ahead of it was the, I believe it's October second council meeting. First one in October, so two meetings from now. I'm unfortunately not going to be available that evening, so I wanted to put it all out to you to see if you all wanted to move it back or if Councilwoman Pate felt excited and really wanted to run one last meeting out of the gate. But I, I didn't want to propose one of those ideas if there's schedule conflicts for others and things like that. I'm personally fine with it, but I will defer to you all on that.
Well, it would be an honor to do it, but I would prefer that you would be here.
Does, I mean, for that matter, would, if it were moved back a week, does anyone have any conflicts that they're aware of or anything like that? Nope.
So we'd have two in a row kind of thing?
Yeah. Next, yeah, I didn't think so.
Go from the second to the ninth?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's not too far of a gap or anything like that to get things paid.
Well, the ninth is contiguous People's Day.
Is what?
Columbus Day. No, we're not in close that day. Are we dead?
No, okay, I don't think so.
I don't think we typically meet that day. We could do the Tuesday.
I think we just do it on a regular Monday and give you that last hurrah.
All right. I will be here, so it doesn't, it, it should be good. If for some reason I am not here, then we could change it.
We can, well, we'll figure it out at the next meeting. I'll put it on your radars if anyone has any conflicts or anything like that, but we'll put a pin in that for next meeting at least. All right. That was the only other thing. And then last but certainly not least, have to wish a very happy seventieth birthday to my dad today.
Oh, happy birthday.
I don't think he's watching right now, but I'm sure he will on YouTube later, so.
Dear youth.
That's, yeah. That's all I have today though. So we've got first up here, Rick today, Councilman Benedetti.
No, just to piggyback off you, Mayor, to thank the DPS, Waste Water Treatment, Mr. Haley. Yeah, trust me, like Dean said, having water in your basement is not a fun thing. I lived through it, but, you know, the system worked the way it was supposed to and we're happy with that because it could have been a lot worse for our residents. So just thank you to all you guys for doing that and to Dean and you for making sure everything was taken care of on top of it. That's it.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilwoman Pate.
Oh, thank you again. Yes, just thanks to everybody who had to work extra hard this past storm season. It doesn't usually happen, but when trees fall, you see the guys right out there immediately. And, you know, great communication from our city administrators so that we could help get information out to residents and also just residents helping residents is, you know, thanks, thanks for that. You know, pitching in and helping your neighbors clean things up is just as important as, as city workers helping out as, as well. Unfortunately, we had to cancel the slow roll for August. It was a couple of days after that storm and when I looked at my weather app, it said that there was one hundred percent chance of rain at six o'clock. So I had some, you know, trauma from the last event. I didn't want to put anybody into another rainstorm. And unfortunately, I don't think it actually rained, maybe just a couple of drops. But hopefully we'll get a few more rolls in by the end of the year. City Beautiful has an event coming up in September. They're welcoming cities from all over the region. When I was on City Beautiful Commission about five years ago, we welcomed people in and so it's been about that long. And we are going to show off, thanks to Tim Beaker for being there and our planners, Beckett and Rader, are going to show off our Rotary Park project and talk to people about oddly enough, rain gardens and coastal resilience and sustainability. Because it's important for stormwater runoff that we also don't put, you know, contaminants in the river. And so, you know, some things that, some improvements that we're going to do at Rotary Park are things that people can replicate in other communities. So we're really showcasing that. I think we're at the chateau. Are we at the chateau? I think we're at the chateau. So it's a beautiful place in Elizabeth Park and, you know, we'll be, you know, showing off our town, which is wonderful. And I think they're going to be putting out the mums, changing out the flowers pretty soon as well. Check out the library. There's all kinds of new programs they have, a community puzzle. They have a puzzle exchange. There's so many other things that they're implementing. Storywalk is well on its way. I thank you, Mayor, for making a donation to support that. I also did. And then we also had another major funder. I can't remember who it was. Oh, it's the Friends of the Library, put, I believe, a thousand dollars toward, roughly, I'll give a take, toward funding that. So contact the library if you're interested in supporting that program and hopefully the installation will be by the end of the year along from like Headkey Elementary School down the Frank and Poet Drain to the library. Thank you, Council, for funding that again through our trail town. What else is going on? Just a welcome back to school, everybody, and just be careful out there with our council people who have children. I no longer have anyone in a public, well, a K through twelve public school system. But, yeah, so it's great to see all the back-to-school pictures and city staff who have their kids in school. So hopefully everybody has a safe, successful year and I think that might be it for today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Peruzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to resonate everybody's feelings about the city employees that dealt with the storm. It was great work and I can't repeat that much more. I mean, you guys said it all, so I'm all set, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kebawattan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to say the same thing. You know, working in a similar capacity for the county, being out there at two o'clock in the morning and watching the waters rise. I'll tell you, I've never seen anything like it in my life. So my hat's off to DPW, DPS for all you guys do, all, all the folks over there and everybody for pitching in because it's, it's really going around the county and seeing a lot of the devastation, truly devastation. And then, you know, the next day we get some tornadoes come through town too. So really the, the area was, was really impacted. I know Mr. Haley was on the phone once, maybe twice. And, you know, that goes for emergency management too, you know. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that happen in, in this community and in the county that I don't think people realize that, you know, they just go to bed, they wake up, you know, they can get to work, stoplights work, you know, fire trucks come down the street. Like everything kind of works normally, right? And there's a lot, a lot of players behind the scenes that are making sure that those things happen and happen on a routine basis. So my hat's off to you, all three or two and a half of you, I don't know, all you guys looking at your phones up there. So, but no, seriously, you know, thank you, folks, for, for everything that you do. It's very much appreciated. Also, yes, school's back in session. Please slow down. You know, the kids are back. They're, they're excited. They're crossing the street, maybe not where they need to be. Slow down. It'll take you another minute to get somewhere. Don't run somebody down. So other than that, that's, yeah, that's all I have to add tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Yes, I definitely do not want to repeat what everyone just said. I, I definitely will say thank you so much to all the hard work that all the employees of our city did during the storm and things that you do every day. It's so important and Scott is absolutely correct. You know, we don't realize what goes on from A to Z. We wake up and, you know, things are done for us. We're very privileged to know that we have some strong, hard workers for our city. But on a good note, I neglected during the last meeting to talk about Zach Conti. Many of you know that he is a senior left tackle at the Eastern Michigan University. And in the last, oh, I don't know, three, three weeks, I believe, he was in danger of not being able to go back to school and finish out his career in regards to playing football. So I will tell you that one of his teammates, Mr. Brian Dooley, selflessly gave up his scholarship for his last year for his teammate. And many do not know that Zach Conti is from Trenton. So I'm truly thankful that he has got a wonderful teammate and a great team. I think that right there shows a lot of humility, encouraged to be able to step aside and give up something very privileged that a lot of people are not able to do that. So I definitely congratulate him and his team for showing team sports and spirit. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Von Crux.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I know it's hard to be the last one and say the same thing that everybody else said, but I always say it and I'll say it forever. Our city employees are the best. And whatever your job is here, you do it and you do it well. And we all appreciate it because you represent us as residents and you represent us as a council. So I want to thank you all personally too. One thing I forgot to mention a few weeks ago at the last council meeting, and I usually do this because I usually don't forget this, and I was so caught up in that wow thing that I forgot to mention the passing of the Honorable Judge Kirk Kirsten. He passed away about three weeks ago, I think it is now, and just a great, longtime Trenton resident. He raised his family here. I went to school with his kids. He was a longtime judge at the Thirty-third District Court. He died at ninety-nine years old. He would have been a hundred this October. And he's raised a great family and those judges down there do a great job. And he left a great legacy. His son, you know, became a judge too after walking in his father's footsteps, just as Gerald McNally, his son, Michael McNally. I mean, this is what makes this area what it is and the families that stay here and raise their kids. And, and I just, I just think that Judge Kirsten was a great honorable man and his wife, Lenora, is the same age and she's still alive. So my condolences to their family and I want to thank him for all his years of service and making Trenton his home for so, so many years. I just didn't want to go without saying something about him tonight. And I should have done it a couple of weeks ago. I'm very sorry. I usually don't just drop the ball on that.
Actually, it passed away since.
But, yeah, he was a judge here for a long time and he deserves great accolades and recognition. So that's all I have tonight. The rest is history.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
We'll go to our other elected officials now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
I'll just mention the next regular council meeting is on Monday, September eighteenth at seven PM.
All right. And we'll go to our assessor. Ms. Barnett, do you have anything?
Hi, good evening. I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Well, I am happy to report... Well, I am happy to report that we could hear you, so there's a bit of Zoom for us here.
Wonderful.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Assessor. And Mr. Treasurer, you got anything?
Yeah, I'm equally happy you can hear us. It's important for us to hear what you all have to say, but sometimes it's important to hear what we have to say. Anyways, with that, I want to throw out some thanks to the folks of Trenton. It's that time of year where the tax deadline has passed. And thank you to the residents who stepped up and paid their taxes, sometimes with a smile on their face, but a grateful attitude living within the community. Also want to thank the folks working in the Treasury, the Treasury Department, because it gets a little bit hectic there. And we have some of the best staff in the city handling pressure moments with a smile on their face and a good attitude. So I want to say that because sometimes we forget thanking those people that make the city run as well as it has. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Treasurer. All right, any of our department heads have anything for us today? See none? That's all right. We'll go to public comment now. Anyone wishing to speak, we'll go to any in-person comment first. And those on Zoom, I'd say begin with your name and address. Direct all questions through me, and please limit your comments to five minutes. We'll check. There's no one on Zoom. See none? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved and supported for adjournment at 7:43 p.m. Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Council, don't go anywhere. We're going to start our closed session right now.